Thank you Vice President Robinson. Before we move into the meeting, I just wanted to inform and to take a moment to share and have a moment of silence. Right before the beginning of the board meeting, Mr. Surry's African Saint Polite for a call to inform me that one of our science teachers at Southfield Latrep passed away. And I wanted to just share that Richard Dujon bring is in peace right now. And I wanted to take a moment for us to have a moment of silence. I will simply add that he was a tremendous teacher. I was in his classroom about five weeks ago and I saw our children engaged, a tremendous voice. I will miss his presence and I will miss his feel. And I was saddened with his retirement, but I also know that I'm just grateful that he is in peace. So, thank you for taking that moment. I'll turn it over to the president.
This meeting is a meeting of the Southfield Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item Number Six. Can we all stand? My name is Kelly Robinson and I'm Vice President of School of Education. President, Mr. Michael Cool has attended an FRN meeting in Washington DC, so he couldn't help but with us this evening.
Good evening, I'm Leslie Nelson, Sports Secretary.
Francis Williams, Trustee.
Thank you, Board's Board Trustee.
Gerald B. Joy, School Trustee.
Underwood Superintendent, thinking of Associate Superintendent for Resources, Deputy Associate Superintendent for Administrative Services.
Derek Lopez, Associate Superintendent for Instructional Services and School Performance.
Okay, we have Mike Madigan and Marley Campbell and Jeff Colco for A1 Studios. Technical assistant is Pauline Gardner and Juan Salay. Recorded minute is Mr. Nicole Christ. We have staff and student recognition at this time. Two thousand and six Wade McCree Scholarship recipients on the year. Southfield Public School was proud to announce that twenty-four of our ninth grade students have been accepted into the Wade McCree Institute Center Scholarship Program and have been awarded over forty thousand dollars each to cover full tuition and fees to attend the University of Michigan Dearborn. The scholarship awards total almost one million dollars. The students are here and their names are displayed on a PowerPoint slide. Students from the Southfield Regional Academic Campus participated in the two thousand and sixteen Michigan Engineering Competition for Science, Math, Architecture and Technology. That's where Dwayne Ethan is here with more information and video.
Good evening, Dr. Wood.
Good evening.
Cabinet members, School Board members, getting parents, students, and community members. I'm Dwayne Ethan, the Principal of Southfield Regional Academic Campus, and I wanted to introduce my students. My students Aleah Langston, Carrie Ann Lang Lancaster, Lacy Hogan, and David Martin Britton. We're here to praise our students on their recent accomplishments and also explaining the Engineering Society of Detroit Smart House Competition. I also have with me Mr. Solomon. Mr. Solomon is one of their coaches and their teacher.
First off, I want to thank the board members for having me tonight, making time to recognize our students. We're here because I'm really excited for our students. They won third place in the Engineering Society Detroit Smart House Competition. We brought a video today for you guys to observe. Play the video.
The Engineering Smart Michigan Competition is a STEM competition for high school students and it actually is a semester-long competition. So, the students start working in about January and then in May, there's an actual finalist competition here at Lawrence Tech.
Today's events are going to conclude what the students did. They were responsible for the design of an energy-efficient, environmentally-friendly home, and now they're going to be doing a demonstration and we will soon see their tabletop model of this environmentally-friendly home that they have designed.
I can't wait to show off these judges like how hard we worked on just drawing all the research that we did.
Some of the criteria, you know, is there's some basic things like dimensions, the usage of energy-efficient renewable materials, how energy-efficient a home is. And then also too, we asked the students several questions to see how well they work together as a team, also did they really understand the technologies that they employ and does it really make sense? And some of the students were very creative in the usage of different technologies.
My favorite part about today is probably just, you know, just how relieved the kids are to get through the whole process that they've been working on for so long and you know how proud they are and how well they did.
What we teach to a lot of the students that we talk to in junior high school, high school, and in colleges like Lawrence Tech is that green and sustainable really needs to be the byword. It needs to be what you think about all the time.
I think it's really important to start thinking on renewable energy so we can start producing more energy with more efficiency.
It's very important because it doesn't just help our pockets money-wise, it also helps the environment. And if you're helping out the environment, you're just making the world a better place to live in.
We're just really happy and proud to be not only a sponsor and be able to allow scholarships for the students that end up being the winners from the competition, but it actually allows students to come here to a campus environment to see what it might be like to be in here or see something.
From this program, a number of my students, by winning the scholarship, have been able to come here.
The competition is open to high school students across the state of Michigan and it allows students to be able to have that theory and that practice from their science classes.
My generation left the world in a worse place than we found it. It's going to be up to you students to bring it back, not just to the way it was, but to make it better for your generation and for future generations.
As you can see from the video, this was a rigorous competition. Students had to work together as a team, they had to submit a proposal, it had to be accepted, and then they made it to round two, they actually went to Lawrence Tech University to show their drawings, they met with engineers and answered questions, and then they made it to the championship round with another set of engineers. Right now, I'm bringing Lacy Hogan up, she was a team leader, she kept everybody in line, and she's going to give you a little bit of information about the competition.
Well, everyone know we did a smart engineering project that was based on how to build an energy-efficient house, which means how are you able to bring less energy, well, bring less money into, bring money into your pockets without using a lot of energy, which means you can use wind turbines, turn off all your lights, using a DZ insight app which tells you how much energy that you're using within your house and how to keep the money moving.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
One other thing, we came in third place, but we were close forward to first place.
It was a very close competition. Again, it came down to a round of questions. The judges, I guess it came down to some of the things that the other team did, I think they had some patio solar panels, so it was very close as far as the design of the house. So, again, I was very proud of the students when they thought outside of the box, they were challenged, I think, outside, like I say, outside of the box to come up with a really great idea. So, it was a very close competition as far as the score.
Dwayne, you want to come and check in? Leader for third place. Okay, our own Board Trustee, Francis Williams, is being honored by the Kentucky State University National Alumni Association as a HBCU game changer on July twenty-third at a special event in the Detroit Marriott. The event honors alumnis of historical black colleges and universities who generously give and are diligent in their quest to improve their communities. Congratulations to Trustee Williams for his outstanding national achievement. Okay.
I wanted to hold my speech until December, as many of you know, this is my final term. So, it's been a blessing and I appreciate the citizens here of Southfield for allowing me, for voting me in twice. I was elected by the Board, thank you Ms. Hall, one of the trustees that was there at the time, for letting me and giving me the opportunity to serve. I have basically four quotes that I'd like to mention that I lived my life by. One was by John Appicelli, and I think many of us know that in my age range. He stated by saying, "My fellow Americans, ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." That's important. How did I do that? I served as a military officer for over twenty years. I served my country, I served my state. As a Reserve and National Guard, I've served the citizens here of Southfield as a trustee. Thanks for that opportunity. I've served my Home Bonus Association, as, not go on and on and on, but as you can see and that's how I've lived my life thus far. The second one was by the goat, greatest of all times, Muhammad Ali. Service to others is the rent you pay for your room here on earth, and I truly believe that. I also believe that what we do here in life echoes an eternity. My last and final quote, life is not about how much money we make or you make, the material things we receive, it's about how we share our life. This past Sunday, we graduated over six hundred and eighty-eight students. Since I've been on this board, it's probably over three, four thousand students, and I've had the opportunity to touch their lives in some way, shape, form, or fashion. So, again, I will gladly walk across that stage, accept the award, not only for me, but on behalf of the citizens here in Southfield because we have a way of doing things, and I call it the Southfield Way. I want to also thank the Detroit chapter of Kentucky State University, Miami-Ammar, for this recognition. Many of us want to smell the roses while we're here. I'm sure we all do. It's nice to be recognized in the afterlife, but it's much more pleasurable to be recognized while we're here. So, thanks to citizens of Southfield, and I thank the Board members for the recognition as well.
Thank you. Thank you. And I just have a few words. Each month I come and I share how beautiful the artwork is here in the room because I'm so grateful for our children and the beautiful exhibits that they and skills that they exhibit and share. But Mr. Trustee Williams, sorry, just mentioned graduation, and I have to say, that was one of the most beautiful picturesque landscape and portraits, so to speak, of being there at graduation with the wonderful students that we have graduating and that beautiful landscape of Shane Park and the water. And so, there's many ways that we bring the art and the beauty of our, of our community into our events. So, for our graduates, it was a wonderful moment, full of memorable and magical moments that I too shared while we were in that, at that event. I also would like to invite Gia Jones to a podium. One of the things that I am so grateful for is our partnerships and the work that outside organizations bring to our district and how they are helping us with our children. And so, C2 Pipeline is a program that we have at Southfield Latrep and at SRAF. And Gia, thank you so much for coming and bringing some of our students and sharing to the community and to our Board what C2 Pipeline is and how it provides a service for our children.
Hello, so as she mentioned, I am Miss G. I am the site coordinator for C2 Pipeline at Southfield Latrep. I will be moving over with our program to Southfield AT next year, so I'm very excited about the opportunity that awaits us there. This year, with the school I'm at closing, we wanted to give students a way to kind of process that and kind of bring about, you know, kind of have full closure and bring about, like a whole stick-in to their journey at that school, at that building, for however many years they had been there. And we put that forth to the students themselves, and what they wanted to do was to create a small video. Our actual video is about eight minutes in length, but I will let the students themselves tell you about how that work went and what went into it.
Hello, this is Mr. Wood, I'm Giovanni Davis, but it's two months I won. This video, we think they're pretty good on. And it, it was a lot of hard work and it took a long time to make it.
So, the students asked and invited teachers and students to participate through interviews. They scheduled the interviews, they did all the videotaping, they did all the sets, the shooting and setting up all the shoots and everything, using their skills from class and also with some support from us. And also, you know, if she's not here, we do want to thank Ms. Julia Ward, she was really supportive and helpful in allowing us to get some of the resources like Final Cut Pro and things like that to put the video together. So, here is a short snippet of the long video, which we're calling the Latrep Legacy Video.
Spending a little bit of time every night studying, whether you have a test coming up or not, you need to study, you need to read. Never let anyone hold you back from your dreams. If you want to do something in life, give it a hundred percent and let you be the one that holds you back, not somebody else.
Any advice that I could give to my students, what would it be? Well, I would give them the advice that my former band director gave me, and that was to always strive for the highest and strive for excellence. And he presented us with a definition of excellence, saying that excellence is the product of hard work and extra effort. It creates the difference between an acceptable job and outstanding job. You have to set the bar and try to go beyond that. And that way, if you even, if you can't reach that bar, at least you know you tried your best in that reaching it. So, I always tell my students to stay motivated, stay encouraged, and keep striving for the best.
I believe it was something that would, like, be with the students, anyone who's been here from day one to now, they'll forever remember the school, uh, either the school or graduating from, what school they go to.
The teachers, because they make a great impact, and they don't just teach, they make them our friends.
And I just have to add a little extra bit. One of the things that I just wanted to share with the community and the Board is that why I'm so grateful for the C2 Pipeline also is because the resources come after school, and it allows our children an extra opportunity to get additional assistance with homework, the putting together of things such as this video, and opportunities that at the end of the day, you're famished, you want a little something to eat, and so they provide that. This is a partnership with Wayne State University School of Nursing and all of that. So, again, thank you. The last thing that I wanted to just share, something I was very, also, there's so many things I'm proud of and so many things that I could highlight, but the last thing that I will this evening is the partnership with our area PTA Council. And the PTA Council represents the majority of our schools in the district where parents are part of the tremendous work that, and partnership that is a part of what has to happen, has to happen to help support our children. And last Friday, we all dressed up and went to the Shriner Silver Gardens to see our children perform, and it was a program put on by the area PTA Council. And Board, I just have to also say that the President of the area PTA Council, Mrs. Alicia Rice, a parent in our district, did a phenomenal job leading this effort, directing us here in the district to help provide something that was just fabulous. And our children, our children were on the stage performing, and it was something that they were coached and supported by their teacher, but it was something that came from within. And the theme was let your imagination fly. So, they painted, they composed, they danced, and they shared all of what they envisioned as letting their imagination fly. So, I just want to thank the children, the teachers, as well as Mrs. Rice. Thank you, and that includes my report. And I'm going to turn it over to Kevin.
Good evening. The personnel report, of course, is contained within the consent, it has been difficult to tell. Also coming to you tonight for action and today is lead to purchase a horse rubber for a leading load of school. So, it's one of the two information standpoint, bring that before the Board, seeing if I'm bringing the weight of that to Shiner.
And we'll just add a little bit about the personnel report for tonight. The personnel report for this evening is quite comprehensive, so the Board members have received probably thirty, how many pages?
Probably thirty.
Of all of the movement that occurs at the end of the school year, and each year this time of the year, we have retirements, we have transfers, and so forth, that is what you are receiving this evening of all the personnel actions and activity that has occurred in the past several weeks since our last meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Wood.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kate Dankovich, and I am the Associate Superintendent for Administrative Services in today. As we are looking on our budget for next year, the sixteen-seventeen budget, which we will spend remainder of the month at our board meetings discussing, I just wanted to take an opportunity today to do some background information and education, both for the community and our Board of Education. If we have a clicker, can I sit there? So, today what I'd like to do is just really do an overview of how schools are funded, and particularly Proposal A, which went into effect in the ninety-four, ninety-five school year. Technical adjustments here, but that way I can also use the pointer here. So, what happened in Proposal A, it was a school finance reform that basically shifted us from a method of funding school from local property taxes to that of a state-defined foundation grant. And the goal of Proposal A was to reduce the gap between school districts by setting a target or basic foundation allowance. And what was discovered in looking at the nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three, and also the ninety-three, ninety-four, revenues the districts were receiving from either local sources or state sources, and looking at on a per pupil basis, the range across the state with five hundred and twelve school districts ranged between forty-two hundred dollars and some districts over ten thousand dollars. So, for nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five, a target of five thousand dollars was set. And that target was basically looked at to try to be the equalization point where they could start to bring some of the lower districts up and kind of curtail the growth on the higher-ended districts in order to bring some uniformity across the state. So, for those that had a foundation or a calculated foundation grant above sixty-five hundred dollars, which is like Southfield Public Schools and fifty-one other districts, in order to maintain that same level of per pupil funding, additional millage had to be levied on the homeowners. Meanwhile, what was happening is they were able to, from a state perspective, narrow this gap by giving greater increases as they allocated the state school aid fund budget to those at the lower end to help bring them up to that target of five thousand dollars. As a result of Proposal A then, how districts were funded from a general education standpoint is just as, there's some, there's some nuances here, but simplified, you take the number of pupils that you have in your district and they multiply it by the foundation grant. For special education, it's on a reimbursement basis, based on the amount of actual reported costs that went into your special ed programs. So, here's an example, in particular for this fiscal year. In September, we reported to the state our cost for our special education programs and our special ed transportation for last year, for the fourteen-fifteen fiscal year. The state pays, as you can see there on the special ed component, they pay twenty-eight point six one, a couple more decimal points percent, the district pays seventy-one percent. In special ed transportation, they pay seventy point four two percent, or they reimburse us that amount, and then the district is responsible for the balance of twenty-nine point five eight percent. So, when we go across, we look at the reported costs, we can see we had fourteen point six million in special ed costs, of which the state paid about four point two million, and the district paid seventy-one percent of it, or ten thousand, or, excuse me, ten million, almost ten and a half million dollars. Special ed transportation, the reimbursement rate is greater, but the base is significantly smaller, with two point four million dollars of expenses reported. The state reimbursed us one point seven million, so the district was left paying seven hundred and seventeen thousand. The significance of this is when we look at the cost, the amount that the district is left with, that eleven point one million dollars or nearly eleven point two million dollars comprises about eleven percent of our overall general, general fund budget. There is also something to note in that is that we are reimbursed a year later. So, the district took down some costs this year with bringing the Kennedy Learning Center back to the district. We will not be reimbursed for those funds until after our costs are reported. Going back to Proposal A, this chart has a lot of data, I just want to highlight a few things. This is just showing it nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five. This is just showing in nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five what the breakdown was. Of the five hundred and seventy districts that were in the state, forty-one were at the, were running at the minimum foundation of four thousand two hundred dollars. Two hundred and seventy were between the forty-two hundred and five, whoa, I'm sorry, five thousand. And the hold harmless, between the five thousand and sixty-five hundred, there are two hundred and seven. And as I said, those that were above the six thousand five hundred, there are fifty-two, and those are known as the hold harmless districts. So going forward, twenty-one years, the minimum now is not forty-two hundred dollars, but rather it's seven thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars, of which seven hundred and eight districts are there. So really, they have erased the gap for a good part of that. Those between the seventy-three ninety-one and the eight thousand one hundred and sixty-nine, which is again, it's a little bit above the target, the state still pays that difference, there's eighty-three of them, and then those that are above the threshold, we have fifty-seven. And part of that has to do with the change in taxable values. But some things to note on here that I find significant. We look back at ninety-four, ninety-five, the state had five hundred and seventy school districts that it was funding. In sixteen, fifteen, sixteen, there are eight hundred and forty-eight. That difference is a result of charter schools. And a charter school receives a foundation based on the basic amount, so they receive this seven thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars per pupil. So the state resources are being spread out over a greater number of districts. The second thing that I'd like to point out here is if you look at the change over twenty-one years of what the foundation grant has been, those that started off at the base of four thousand two hundred dollars, over the course of the twenty-one years, on a per pupil basis, they've seen an increase of three thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars. Those that were above the basic amount, but still funded by the state level, where they receive eight thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars, they saw an increase of about one thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars over these twenty-one-year periods. Going down to the yellow section, go ahead, Ms. Rice.
So what did we see? For Southfield?
Southfield's in the yellow, and that was a beautiful segue. So we can see that our ninety-four, ninety-five, our foundation, which is really what we were collecting on a per pupil basis from taxes, when Proposal A went into effect, was nine thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. That is well above the six thousand five hundred, which was that hold harmless threshold. So that difference was what we collect, continue to collect then as hold harmless millage. But over the course of the twenty-one years, and as we look at changes in the foundation grant, our foundation grant is now ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars for fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, so it has only grown one thousand five hundred and twelve dollars, just like half, as you can see, of what some of the other districts across the state have experienced.
In twenty-one years?
In twenty-one years.
It's not a check that you can commit on stage, in twenty-five years.
This graph shows essentially the same information. If you look at the dark blue, you see that curvature, you can see where the, it was, what the spread was between those different categories of being at the minimum of forty-two hundred, a basic target, and then those slightly over the target and those that are in the hold harmless. The light blue area really highlights the fact that the state has achieved what it was hoping to do and that the majority of the districts are really at that minimum base target amount. And you can see that those hold harmless districts are still sitting out there by themselves. However, we're going to get more into the hold harmless momentarily. How the funding works for the foundation grant is essentially the state determines through the State Act how much the foundation allowance will be. Sometimes we see, you know, an increase of, and we'll hear of it, sixty dollars, or a two X formula where it's a hundred and twenty. But that two X means is that if you're on the low end, we'll bring you up, give you twice the amount as a district on the high end. But if we look at the sample district, and this is based on ninety-five, or the two thousand fifteen, sixteen foundation allowance, the most the state will pay is eight thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. What they first do is they calculate how much the district is able to receive from its non, its commercial or the eighteen mills on the non-homestead properties. So it looks at all the commercial rental properties, et cetera, and calculates the eighteen mills on that, divides it by the number of general ed pupils they have. In this sample district, that would come out to twenty-eight hundred dollars per pupil, and then the state pays the difference between the eight thousand one sixty-nine and the twenty-eight hundred. When you're in a hold harmless district like Southfield Public Schools is, the publicized foundation grant or the target for our foundation is ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars per pupil. Again, the state looks at the same formula in the light blue area, saying, "How much will you get from your non-homesteads at the eighteen mills?" So we divide that by the number of general ed students we currently have, that comes out to three thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. It then says, "Back in nineteen ninety-five, when we first determined what a foundation grant was twenty-one years ago, your hold harmless supplemental amount was two thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars." And the assumption going forward from when Proposal A was enacted was that we would continue to be able to collect that amount of money from our residential homeowners. So then, the state then pays the remaining balance in order to bring us to the ten thousand nine seventy-one. So again, this is a little hard for you to walk through, but every time I try to point it, it flips forward. But you follow across, basically, we'll take the first line first. This year, eleven-twelve, our foundation grant was ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. The next three components there follow that graph that I just showed you. The first portion comes from our non-homesteads, with the eighteen mills, they calculate it out to three thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. It then said that our hold harmless, they're assuming we're going to get that amount of two thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine. And then the state will pay the balance of four thousand one twenty-seven. So that formula follows through for all the years listed here. Going to the other side of that black mark, which shows our general ed count for the years. Going back and looking at what our not, our homestead and commercial, personal property were at those times and our hold harmless millage, this shows what the actual revenue was per pupil during that particular fiscal year. So we can see again, on eleven-twelve, we collected revenues for hold harmless of two thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents, which is two hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirteen cents shy of the twenty-nine fifty-nine. So in fact, for fiscal year eleven-twelve, although it looks like, or it's publicized, that our foundation grant was ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-one, it was actually two hundred and seventy-three dollars less than that. So that's how this chart works, and just, we can see those short falls in the furthest right-hand column. So we have really been shy of our foundation grant. And that really is due to the fall in taxable values, because that's what our foundation grant millage is based on. And we'll take a look at that, because Proposal A limited tax increases on properties to either the cost of living or five percent, but it did not limit how much it could fall. So when we look at what happened to property taxes over the last several years, we'll see the extent of the decline. Also, when we take a look at the authorized millage that we have, based on our taxable rates, we can't, even, even at eighteen mills, we wouldn't be able to levy enough to make that two thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. It's not possible. And then further, the authorized tax rate that we have in place, we don't, we have not levied that full extent because of the recession that had taken, had taken place in the community. If there are any questions on this chart, I know there's a lot on it. So moving forward, as I was talking about taxable values, this chart is the, is the taxable values of all property within the Southfield Public Schools Congress. So we can see that in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, we took a steep loss, and it's slowly coming up. But again, that recovery is going to be limited to the cost of living or five percent, whichever is lower. So it's going to be, you can't see that. This chart shows the taxable values, that's just the same line, it's not actually to scale there, but it's to illustrate what's happened with our millage rates as a result of that change in taxable value. The very bottom line, we have the debt millage, and what that debt service millage is for is strictly, it's restricted to pay for the interest and principal on our outstanding capital bonds. The district has about sixty-two point five million dollars worth of bonds outstanding every year. We do have to pay interest on the outstanding, and we also have a principal payment. When the interest rates or the property tax values fell, we had to increase that debt millage in order to ensure that we received enough property taxes to cover our debt obligations. The actual millage rate is set, is not set on a dollar amount, it's set on the liability that we are able to adjust accordingly. As we've seen some recovery, though, if you look at two thousand twelve, in two thousand thirteen, our debt millage rate was three point five mills, and as we've been retiring debt and property values have been recovering, we were able to drop that millage rate to three point two mills last year, and then in the current year, we are levering three mills. And our calculation for the sixteen-seventeen year will also be the three mills. We are also hoping to be able to do some bond refunding that will further adjust that debt millage. The blue line above that is our hold harmless millage. And that, we can see in two thousand nine, was produced and has been brought back up in order to, in line with our commitment that was made to the community and with the renewal, which was folded back in November of two thousand thirteen. Together, we can see what the total millage has been, that's been levied on homesteads over the course of the last several years, and it has been relatively flat from two thousand twelve on, with some decreases shown in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, and two thousand sixteen due to the reduction in the debt millage rate. Are we good to a mark of here? So as I was saying before, the funding for general education is a component of two things. The number of children you have and then the foundation grant, which we just dissected. And here's what we, we take a look at our number of pupils. This is a, a projection that we received from middle cities. They generally, they do this for us every year, take a look at where we have, they look at trends, look at birth rates. And so what we can see is that we have a situation of declining enrollment, which primarily has to do with, and I apologize for the size of this, is that the amount of twelfth graders that we have graduating or leaving us because they were from a year that had more children born that year. But as they graduate, we have less students coming in. So if we take a look at this for an example, this, in fifteen, sixteen, and this is general ed students, we have six hundred and forty-seven seniors. They will be replaced next year by three hundred and sixty-seven incoming kindergarteners. And then piece right there, I'm so sorry. But I just want everyone to clearly see that there is this real peace happening that our kindergartners, and if we go across the district right now, we have a few places where we have kindergarten classrooms that are busting at the seams. But I have kindergarten classrooms where there are seventeen. And when we add it all up, there's a drastic difference between the number of kindergartners and the number of twelfth graders. And then this gray shaded area just kind of shows us how that continues to progress. The kindergartners will become middle schoolers, will become, you know, high schoolers, and it continues on. So again, one of the most important things that we can do and why we really embrace our early childhood centers and the Head Start program is really to get children engaged and committed to families into Southfield Public Schools early on. And again, everything that we, that we do and the service we deliver really helps us to, we want to attract and retain. The birth rates also are making our pool potential students smaller. Just to sum this up, this is the last slide I have to share. It really just shows how all those pieces that we've been talking about come together to comprise what we have as far as resources to cover our expenses and to run this district. So this is our current budget, it was amended on June seventh, showing that we have revenues of eighty-eight point five million dollars projected for the fifteen, sixteen school year. We can see that basically ninety percent between the local and the state are really tied to our, our foundation grant, how many kids that we have, and then some of the category grants that we receive. So again, the emphasis on the amount of students is really critical, and also our funding based on what we're able to get from our foundation grant. We see Oakland Schools provides us about seven point five million. A lot of that does come on in the support of special ed programs, your P A eighteen, which is the millage for special education. The one point three million dollars that we show here of other is the result of the sale of Shano's Elementary. And again, that's just a one-time revenue source that we will be able to, again, put into next year's budget. I thank you for your, for your time and attention, and I hope the background's been helpful. Sure, Board, you may have any comments or questions, but I did want to share with the, the community and the board again also that I have asked Kate to put together a real small vignette of teaching about this budget and about the finances of the district, because it's a serious piece. And, and, and thank you for providing these bite-sized moments. And we also had last week an opportunity for staff to come and to hear more than just this, to really break it down, because this is our budgeting season, and what we have to do is to prepare a budget that is going to be reflective and abrasive of the declining enrollment, that is a real thing. We cannot staff for what we don't have. And also, a part of the season is ensuring that our budget reflects what we'll be supporting next year as well as the year out from that. You know, we'll have, Board, the whole piece with what the governor signed last year regarding early warning. So I, I'm just extending and saying at this moment, it's a very, very serious moment in this passage of a school year, because we cannot go forward as of June thirtieth without having a balanced budget, being real about the dollars and the cents that we have in this district, and yet providing the best programming. this district, and yet providing the best programming that we can for every child that is in this district. And so I'm just, I'm just sharing my feelings at the moment, because I take it so seriously. And I take the jobs, I take the children, I take the lives and the parents that are entrusting us to make sure that we're doing what is best for their future. And I value the teachers, because I know that this is what is difficult, because anytime, anyone has to be laid off, anytime, someone has to lose a job. It is not just that person that feels it, I feel it. And I will say this publicly, and I've said it before, I have been laid off five times, and every time, I have been blessed to find something and to land something even better than what I had. But I will also say that it is not an easy journey, and we all feel it, we all feel it. And so, Board, I just took a liberty right here, but please, again, thank you, because this is serious, this is very, very serious.
Dr. Wood, I'd also like to say, like I said, I won't have, we're off next month, five months left, so I'm gonna say what I need to say. We must attract students. Without the students, none of us would be here, that's the bottom line. None of us would be here. We must retain our students. We must continue the Southfield way of working together and fully understanding where we're headed as a district. I will say once again, as I said last year, around the same time, if we don't take control and manage the lives in the district here, the emergency manager will come in, will, 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 come in, and you will have no voice. You think I'm kidding, look around at other districts where this has happened. Am I saying that's good for us? No, not at all. We've done things for several, many years here in Southfield, we continue to work together, but the bottom line is, we don't have the students, we don't need the teachers, we don't need the administration, we don't need the cabinet, we don't have the money, although money is important, we can't provide the type of classes, the courses, and everything else that we do for our students, we just won't be able to afford it. I would hate, I know that's a strong word, to see us come on the emergency management. You think I'm kidding? I'm not, just look what's been happening here, and look what's happening now to the districts north of us. This is no joke, and we say it every year. We want to keep our community informed, and that's what we're doing here as a board. Total transparency, since I've been on this board six and a half years and before, total transparency. We have nothing to hide, it's not, we, there's no agenda here. None of us are getting rich by trying to do the right thing, or by doing the right thing. So we need your assistance, Dr. Wood, I'd like to see us have some talking points for our laypeople who don't understand, who may not fully understand the budget. The budget in your home, the budget in your jobs, the budget in other places, it's totally different from a school budget. It took me a year and a half basically to really fully, and not fully, but to comprehend and understand. You have to wait on money to come in, you have to think, you hope money's coming in. Sometimes you get little windfalls here and there, but understand, we're here for our students first and foremost. We must adjust, reorganize, and do what we have to, so that we can maintain control of our student lives in this district.
Thank you. The next on the agenda is Mr. O'Kens.
Good evening, Board. My presentation this evening will consist of the focus school report for Stevenson Elementary, as required by the State, as given by the State. So Sandy LaPerry, as the principal of Stevenson Elementary, will give the focus report for our board members.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sandy LaPerry, I'm the principal of Stevenson Elementary, and tonight I am providing our quarterly report on focus school progress for Stevenson. This is a report that we provide to update the Board of Education, parents, and stakeholders on progress that we are making to close the achievement gap, which is the reason that we were designated as a focus school, between our highest achieving and lowest achieving students. And this reporting period is from March through May of 2016. Obviously, our goal is to continue to improve closing that achievement gap from our bottom thirty percent achieving students, as well as other students that need additional support. We're continuing to provide research-based interventions and rigorous instruction to all of our students. So Mrs. Sizinski, our school district assessment coordinator, is going to assist me now and give you a little more information.
So I just want to recap how, why Stevenson is a focus school, and that's because there was a, Stevenson had a large gap between their lowest achieving and their highest achieving students. They used on the thirteen fourteen MEET test. And so because in the year thirteen fourteen to fourteen fifteen, we transitioned from MEET to MSEP, there were no two-like assessments to be able to compare together. And so the State decided that all the schools that were designated as focus or priority schools during that thirteen fourteen school year would be on a hold status until we had administered two years of the MEET or that MSEP assessment. So we now have just finished administering the spring sixteen MSEP assessment, and those results will probably be out late fall, so I'm thinking November, December-ish is kind of the timeframe. And then moving forward, they also, now complicating the picture of this, is the new education act signed by President Obama. And so they are in negotiations with the U.S. Department of Education and Michigan Department of Education about how all of that reworks itself. And so in the interim, Stevenson has kind of caught in this limbo. And so we continue to do the things that Mrs. LaPerry is going to, you know, talk to you about, but also then reporting to you just how we're tracking student progress and monitoring student growth and progress as we move in this kind of period of limbo.
Okay, thank you. So I wanted to share with you three strategies that we're using to increase the achievement in our bottom thirty percent students that I don't think I've shared with you before. One strategy I know that I have talked about is our small group intervention and remediation within the classroom. So that's provided by the classroom teacher, two to three times a week for math and reading, and they will actually pull a very small select group on a specific content strand that they use data to determine what needs to work, and they will pull those kids to a small table and give them very specific intervention lesson to help boost them up and get them on achievement level within that strand or content. One thing I don't know if I've told you about is we have a lot of good fortune in the sense that we have many retired teachers and volunteers that come to Stevenson on a weekly basis. I'm sure they won't mind if I name a couple of them. One of them is Leanie Washington, one of them is Lynn Prince, they're both former Stevenson teachers, and they bless us with their presence on a regular basis. And they will pull out small groups of two to six kids, mostly in grades K-2, kindergarten first or second grade. And they, at any given time when you visit Stevenson, you might walk down to the Lower Al Common's area and see them working at a table with students in reading or math. We also have some very dedicated volunteer retired teachers that some of them reached out to me from, once they hit retirement, they wanted to work in a school. We also say have some volunteers from Kensington Church who have a nice partnership with us. So they come on a regular basis. In fact, one of the volunteers has asked if he could follow his, one of his students to Bernie, because he's developed such a strong mentor relationship with that student once he gets to sixth grade, so we're working on that. And as you know, the teachers are continuing to receive professional development, which is also a research-based intervention strategy on data analysis, which helps them to determine how their lesson plans are going to look, and driving that instruction and remediation topics for those small groups. So here's one thing that we started doing the last three or four years, is students are tracking their progress, and the teachers are tracking their progress and making it visual for the students. So you can see on the board is a data wall that we put up in on the bright, that's from my fifth grade class, and you can see the color-coded dots, the students are tracking their scores on the map, NWEA assessment, fall, winter, and spring. And you can see that in the pink spring, most of the students have brought their scores up quite a bit to those higher achievement levels. And the board on the left is actually in the Title I classroom with the intervention students, and the students drew their own Post-it note to represent themselves on the data chart. So specific professional development, as you know, we've been doing quite a bit of staff professional development this year with the math data with Polly, Mrs. Sizinski, and the Learning Continuum. We're continuing to work within our school improvement plan on our math talk moves, which is using student discourse and engagement in math instruction. And we've had a lot of help with our district Division of Instruction Professional Development facilitators in math and the ELA support. And again, we're using a lot of data to guide our instruction, and using how to use those assessments to do that. So here's, using some spring testing data, this is that cohort that we've been following from third grade, the last MEET cohort that is now in the fifth grade at Stevenson. As you can see, we were really looking to see how many of those twenty students that were in the bottom thirty percent of the fifth grade class were able, in the last couple of years, to move out of the bottom thirty percent. So in math, you can see that fourteen of those students, or seventy percent of them, are no longer considered the bottom thirty percent. In reading, twelve of those students are sixty percent, and the language usage is twelve students or fifty-five percent. But the, for the State's purposes, they really look at the math and reading scores in terms of the focus school designation. And as always, School Board and community, I appreciate your continued support.
Again, I thank you, I know that that's hard to come up with a name and to kind of have that stamp and that label of being a focus school, but I do thank you for the diligence that you're doing interventions with our students. And I applaud the volunteers, because these are the volunteers that you have that you know...
No, no.
He started to screen people.
I saw you look over there when you were missing...
Oh, I wasn't sure.
But to that point though, I think it's important, because we've talked a lot about numbers, and I think it's important that the community understands that a lot of this work takes, it does take resources, it takes money, but some of those resources can come in the form of volunteers. Right now, we are, we're in the midst of this new third grade reading legislation, and what we have now are all the kids that just finished at Bussie, this is the reality. Those kids that are going into kindergarten, those are going to be the first set of kids that the State's going to be looking at in three years, in terms of holding them back. This is very real, this is a real thing. So we, you know, in the community, if you have the time, two, three hours, like you mentioned, we're going to need bodies in the schools to help with that reading intervention. That's a very real way to get involved. So I do encourage that, and I do applaud you for being very creative in implementing some of those strategies, and while in the midst of this, because you are also providing a model for some of the other schools that may not be a focus school, but may need to look at other strategies to implement. So I do applaud you for that. And then lastly, the data wall, I absolutely love that. I think that that just really gets the kids involved and helps to boost their motivation for their achievement. They get to feel it, they get to be involved in it, and I can just imagine how competitive they get with trying to make sure, you know, they're reaching their numbers and growing. So thank you for that, and those in the community, I do, again, I just encourage you to get involved with, just helping out with your service.
Will I have the Head Start report, Mr. Alana Charles?
Evening, thank you, Board. As my friend is aware, I was taking my mom up from the hospital and getting her home safe and sound, so, excuse my tardy. The, and also in lieu of that, Paulette, I did not send you the second PowerPoint. So, Fuzzy Center for Early Childhood Education Director's Report for the month of May, reporting in June, two hundred and sixteen currently enrolled, one hundred sixty-seven waiting lists and thirty on the, thirty on the drop list. As relates to CACFP, that's one thousand seven hundred twenty-one breakfast, one thousand nine hundred forty-six lunch, and one thousand seven hundred sixty-six snacks. There is one Head Start teacher vacancy, I think we've maintained that vacancy all year. The, there are no health updates, besides the fact that we met the compliance for all screenings. Currently, there are twenty-four children with IEPs, eighteen Head Starts, six in GSRP, zero speech referrals, and zero mental health referrals have been submitted since the last report. The current five-year strategic plan update is that we're currently meeting the goals. The self-assessment update, on track with corrective actions. The Office of Head Start visited at Bussie on Monday the 23rd, and they stayed through the 26th of May. And they conducted a comprehensive service and school readiness review. Everything went well, according to Ms. Hill. The report will be sent to Head Start and a letter sent to the Board President with the results of review. Additional updates include the Office of Head Starts and a letter with submission requirements for the dispersment of COLA, we talked about that in our study session last week, and the five-year continuation grant has been approved by the Office of Head Start. The supplemental grant submitted to request funds to offset the cost for removal of lockers and new playground equipment was submitted. Ellen Chavez, our program specialist in Region Five, is trying to push the application through, and hopefully we'll hear something sometime in June. Enrollment for the upcoming school year is underway, and we have received approximately eighty-four new applications. As it relates to the dollars and cents, if you recall, our budget total for federal was one point three, one million, three hundred twenty thousand dollars, two hundred ninety-four. And we have spent seventy-five point seven percent, leaving twenty-four point three remaining, as far as the local match, which would include many of those things that Trustee Smith just spoke about in terms of, anytime, we are right at the twenty-four percent remaining mark for that. And the grand total of where we are roughly averages out to twenty-four point three percent in terms of all monies to be spent or percent remaining. Thank you, Ms. Stankovich, for the financials every month. Thank you, Ms. Hill, for the report, Director's Report every month, and we had a great year. And thank you, Mr. Joyce, I don't want to discount that, Mr. Joyce was at media meeting, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Charles. Okay. We now have our action items. Action items, these are items requiring action on the Board. Can I have a motion to open the report, fifty-four one hundred, Personnel Action Report?
I can open the report, thank you so much. Action Report.
Any discussion?
No discussion, but just a comment, that all, all names on this list, I made sure to read and identify all the columns and just get a real good feel for things, and in my short five years of being on the Board, a lot of my former teachers have retired, and so very, fewer and fewer, they look familiar, some of the names, but I definitely want to shout out our retirees, you know, that, that constitute a wonderful knowledge that they get to go and be and do their thing, so just wanted to at least show a little of our retirees.
Anyone else? Okay, through the role panel, I understand you.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
Trustee Wallace?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
I saw again, trustee.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to open the report, fifty-four one oh one, approval of supplemental funds in the Office of Head Start?
I can reopen the report you just mentioned.
Fifty-four one.
Support?
Support.
Okay. Okay.
Discussion. Okay, discussion, I'm sorry.
Certainly. I'd like the Dennis to come to the podium also. And I'll share with the board that, and actually, for the community, we did a survey with our community to kind of gauge feelings as it relates to Durham transportation. And Jackie presented it last week, and basically, it's a better-than-average feeling at this moment about Durham. And we know that there are some concerns over the past several years. And part of the passage for the past eight years is that we had a major drop economically, and so we have not had but one increase from Durham. But there's concern still about the service, concerns about the cost, and concerns that we have a school to open up for children in September. And so for the community to know, and Dennis, you can go ahead and share, I could keep talking, but I know I want you to share, and also talk about the re-opener, if the board were to approve this after the first year.
Thank you, Dr. Wood. Members of the board, cabinet, members of the community, and parents, good evening. Durham has been one of our partners here since 2008, basically. And they've been a good partner with us, and they have taken some concessions over the years. We have also changed some adjustments or made some adjustments in their contract as far as requirements for bus replacement. And currently, we own about 50% of the fleet. Durham owns about 50% of it, but our buses that the district owns are getting older and older. And this is causing issues when we go to state police inspection, which is done annually. And the state police inspector said last year, "I don't want to see a couple of these buses next year." So Durham was forced to put a program together to bring in some new additional buses to replace the ones that were, the inspector didn't want to see them. And not that the buses weren't safe, that was not the idea whatsoever. The buses were totally safe, but here in Michigan, as you know, we have a lot of problems with rust, okay? In your own personal vehicle, you'll see, you know, rust develop after a number of years, and these repairs are quite expensive when you start having to replace major panels and so on. So for that reason, they need to bring some additional buses in to replace some of the ones that may not pass inspection this year. They have, we have asked them to take, like I say, concessions, they have. They've only had one increase over the last number of years. And have they had some issues? Certainly. I think any of our vendors we've had issues with, but Durham has, you know, really stuck it out, brought in additional people when needed, and worked with us to work through these situations. We are, you know, currently have a proposal in front of the board to okay their contract for one year and two additional years that would be negotiated after the first year. So I think it's a pretty good contract based on what they have to do. They're proposing bringing in 20 additional new buses to replace some of the buses that are aging, and that's basically it. Is there any questions?
Yeah, because they're asking here a 5.9% increase the first year.
That's correct.
And a 3% each additional year.
That's correct.
So it's about 11.9% over a three-year period.
That is correct.
And we just thought about this last month, so I have a hard time swallowing this.
I echo that.
Dr. Wood, can you tell us what would that impact be, the first year, 5.9% over, million dollars?
The first, the first year, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. We currently pay about 4.2 million, so it equates to 247,100.
247,800 first year.
Four hundred.
Second year, if it goes 3%?
Will be another 3% on top of that, so, you know. I think I calculated, I'll calculate that. It is previously calculated. So it'll just go, it'll go up an additional $7,000, about $7,500 above, on top of the 200, the 2.7. But we'll see 2.73 consecutive years, and we'll support additional bus.
I have to support them, and I know we're not voting, but I need to voice my opinion. They, I don't like the tactic. They know we've been dealing with all year long. If they wanted an increase before all the trouble, I don't, and this is not the first time we've had trouble, concerns, I don't know why they didn't make that known to us before. They have representatives here in our meetings who know that we're facing tough times. They came to us at the last minute. So in my opinion, I personally think we need further negotiations, and we may have to take other discussions. That's my opinion. Deal to the rest of the board.
You may ask, comments? Yes, I do. I do echo my colleagues. I do, a couple of sentiments I have. One is the reality that we do have to start school in a few months. We do have to provide transportation for our families, so we at least...
We don't have to, but we do.
What we have right now, so that's, you know, I don't think that's something that we can just decide like the little months out there, we're not going to do that anymore. So I think we definitely have to uphold that for the one year, but I think it is very important that it is understood in the language and it is understood to the community that in a timely manner, next year, this coming school year, this will be, continue to be negotiated and looked at. I do echo the sentiment. I do not like the tactic. I do not like the last minute. I just, I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair, and I don't think it's right, so...
You may ask, Mr. Joyce? Mr. Lewis? Any comments?
In this contract, it clearly states, okay, that it's a one-year agreement or contract with two one-year extensions. So certainly, as we go through the next school year, the 16, 17 school year, you know, certainly that's something we could look at and go from there. But we're not locked into, you know, two-year, three-year, five-year deal. It's a one-year with two one-year extensions.
Ms. Charles? Yeah. I can concur with the words that have been spoken thus far, and just wanted to step out on that limb and just reiterate something that I said last week, which is, where do our parents prioritize transportation if it were to the detriment of this district? Again, election year, and so I'm saying it anyway. If you say, "Well, I'll take my child somewhere else," you'll still have to take your kids to school. So I just want us to not always just rely on the past for how we operate for the now or for the future, just knowing that when you go to these NSBA conferences, there's many districts that do not bus. It's $4 million that we have to shell out, and I can just see how much more useful it could be in a lot of different ways, so, you know, definitely not going rogue today for this upcoming school year, but definitely want us to face outside of our confinement.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Trustee Robinson?
No.
Myself, yes. Trustee Williams?
No.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
No.
Trustee Lewis?
No.
They did not, they did not.
For two, yes, it worked.
Okay. I'll just ask to be negotiable. All right. Report 54-103, Paulette School Solutions. We have a motion to open, Mrs....
Can we open the report? 54-103.
Support.
Any discussion? Any discussion, please? Can I have the vote roll, please?
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
No.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
No.
Trustee Lewis?
No.
They did not, they did not.
For two, yes, it worked.
Okay. I'll just ask to be negotiable. All right. Report 54-103, Paulette School Solutions. We have a motion to open, Mrs....
Can we open the report? 54-103.
Support.
Any discussion? Any discussion, please? Can I have the vote roll, please?
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, can I have a motion to open our report 54-104, Proposal Edmonton Instructional Technology Time Track Renewal?
Can we open Report 54-104, proposal for Edmonton Instructional Tech?
Support.
Any question? Comments?
Is this new, Dr. Wood, in the community? Is it more background?
Certainly. It is not new. George, you want to come to the podium?
It's what we've been using for the past seven years, but he was...
Good evening to the members of the board, superintending cabinet. The Edmonton contract is actually for the programs that we've been using in the district for the last six, seven years.
Six or seven years.
For the OPLE, for our recovery programs in the high school, Study Island, Reading Aids, for our K-8 schools. This is just a standard contract renewal.
I could be mistaken, but I, where I go less, I want to say Edmonton is a part of all my schools, in terms of services they give for, they've signed Edmonton. There were two of them, I don't have my notes with me, but it seemed like we were, in theory, already paying them for that. That might be what...
You may be referring to GenNet, which our Interlet Online course, we have an intergovernmental agreement with GenCISD, and that's a separate proposal.
So the funds are aligned to our goal number two, and the funds are there. You have planned for the forecast for these all year, roll out.
Myself, yes. Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to open and close Report 54-105, Everyday Math Matters, K-5 Instructional Materials?
I will open Report 54-105, Everyday Math Matters, K-5 Instructional Materials.
Again, this is a standard annual renewal.
These are for our page five mathematics consumable journals that our students use. It's a part of the district's everyday math adoption, which the district has been using since the late 1990s. So again, this is a standard renewal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Charles?
I just had a comment. Which is, so, a retiring, they once mentioned how sometimes just some of the tools that they have at the school, some teachers are really working it in a very robust fashion, whereas others not so much, and hopefully I'm being very politically correct. So I just, before I vote, which is coming soon, I just really want to encourage, if you have lots of ideas of making professional development and, you know, how we can make sure to utilize all of our equipment so that Apple TVs and Chromebooks and...
Smartboards.
The smartboards, so that they're not becoming just relics in the classroom. I was really surprised to hear that. It was slightly upsetting that, you know, we make such effort to provide technology and all these other things. I just want the folks to use them. It makes the classroom experience that much more comprehensive.
I appreciate your comment and value that, and it is a concern as well as an effort on our part, and that is the reason why even at the high school for the upcoming school year, there's a tremendous amount of professional learning so that the technology is a part of the instructional process, not just another whiteboard or, you know, tool such as that. So it is a lift, it's a change. It's a change in how we have to teach, and change does not often occur easily.
So in line with that, goal number two of instruction, I absolutely support the...
Okay, that?
Just another comment. We both, I think also, just thinking back on what you were saying in regards to the professional development for the teachers, personally knowing that my daughter uses the everyday math and seeing how it works at home, I think this is a very important piece of the parent university. But I know that we can't teach it to the parents if teachers aren't really digesting it fully. So just a note that this is something that we need to make sure we bridge to the home as well, because it can be decided, I use it personally.
Okay. So, Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Yes. I have a motion to open and approve Report 54-106, GenNet Online Learning. Okay, discussion? Any comments?
GenNet has been our partner in our governmental agreement with them through open schools to provide us with teacher-led online courses that satisfy the state's C-10 requirements, also requirements for students that understand law under 21F, can take up to two online classes and still be within the school with the remainder of the school day. Historically, we purchase approximately 400 semester courses per year, and those can range from AP courses to niche classes, like, you know, Japanese, advanced Mandarin. And again, it's helped to support our students in the high schools, particularly in areas where we have classes where maybe we don't have the students between the high schools, but there's still the desire to have those experiences. The MAP data is being quoted here for your vote as an historic average of what we spend on a periodic basis.
So the teachers and the students receptive to this, they don't have any problem with that, or complaints? Two years ago, we had students complain about the phone line, and how's it working now?
What we've got is, first of all, we are working with a different provider, which has, I mean, a lot of the technical issues that we face, particularly in the rural language classes, that has been significantly reduced. The way in which the courses will be used moving forward, again, are going to be more like advanced AP courses that maybe we do not have a teacher board in the district, or niche classes within the visual arts, CAD design, video animation, that we simply, we may not have the staff board, but we have the desire for students to enroll now. And we constantly monitor how the students, the courses that they're taking, as well as the kind of support that is taking place within the classroom with the teacher facilitator.
Dr. Wood, do you see the return on investment being...
Absolutely, because one of the things is that we want to make sure that we're providing the courses for our kids, and if we don't have a teacher, let's get back to the budget, that we have to have so many students in a classroom, it takes for one teacher $137,000 to support one teacher and to teach six different classes, five different classes, but each class is about $20,000, $2,000 if we start looking at it financially. And so to have just one or two students is not enough.
That's right.
That's, okay, it's not enough. So this is truly an effort to help us open up opportunities for children, because one of the things is that our students, when they're going through 12th grade, we don't just let them go, and, you know, they may have all their credits, but we don't let them go. We provide... We provide enrollment, we provide opportunities, and this is another opportunity for them to expand their learning. I'm even engaged in online learning because I wish to grow. And oftentimes, having a course that you take at Harvard or wherever, at home, is a way for even I to expand.
Thank you very much.
Any more questions?
Myself, yes. Trusty Williams.
Yes.
Trusty Charles.
Yes.
Joyce.
Yes.
Trusty Louis.
Yes.
Trusty Robinson.
Yes.
Mayans.
Mayans, okay, thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to open a report fifty-four one oh seven, Functions, Statistics, Trigonometry, Textbook, and Teaching Materials?
Fifty-four one oh seven.
Okay.
These textbooks are needed because we have added an additional three sections of Function Statistics and Trigonometry classes to next year's schedule. This is a bridge course that goes for students that actually need algebra two, but maybe are not necessarily prepared necessarily to take out precalculus. So it's actually been, proved very successful with the several sections we've had this year. And again, based on the enrollments for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, we will have three additional sections that will necessitate this purchase.
Now, these actually textbooks or workbooks?
Textbooks.
Textbooks.
And also includes the teacher tax and ancillary materials as well.
Okay.
So it's not a consumable.
And I value your question about textbook versus workbook. We, often you hear about every year coming for the workbooks for everyday mathematics.
Correct.
This is not going to be the same. This is a textbook that you will not see coming forward every year. It's like you're not seeing the biology coming forward, you're not seeing chemistry coming forward. Because you purchased that a few years ago, and that's one of those instructional tools that we have.
So updated book, a brand new book that we never had before, which was revised textbook, what is it?
So as we were looking at the data, we actually realized that our students were being matriculated in precalculus, and they had not mastered Algebra II concepts as well as they should have. And so the state of Michigan requires a senior math course that is rigorous. And so this is an extension of Algebra II with the functions part of it, but it also adds statistics and trigonometry to the students so that they can actually master those algebraic concepts they did not master in the Algebra II course, while also picking up stats and trig, which are college-ready courses. And so it is, in addition, it is a new course for our kids, but we found value in it because our kids were not engaging in material that they had not mastered by precalculus, and also they were getting college-ready skills. Does this come in electronic manner?
I would have.
It has electronic tools with it. I'm not sure that, I'm not certain that the textbook is online, we can find that out for you, but it does have electronic tools with it. And we're adding this as I heard this chat readily, we're adding three additional sections as well as what you just told me on this little thing. That's exactly right. So this year, we actually had two sections at South Valley, but I think one section at South Valley High. And when the two high schools come together to South Valley, it's either will be six sections of students because of the need for those students to have a senior math class that is not precalculus, but that will allow them to actually have a college-level math session.
And I have to just also add, there's been a significant effort to ensure that our kids are matriculating through and becoming competent in their mathematics. It is a gatekeeper. And so I appreciate the work of the whole team as we really drill and make sure that our kids are not just passing through, but they're passing and understanding. And so we're doing some additional things to ensure that.
And we've heard from some of our students that have gone on to college that this is one of the areas that they needed, they should have got, they wish they could receive more assistance.
And what they, absolutely, and I will just add for the community, the conversation, because I was a part of those conversations, is that the teaching of mathematics is not the same as it was when I was matriculating through school. And so consequently, professors at the college level even are asking, "Why? Tell me, why did you do this problem this way? Show me the evidence." And not just going through and completing problems and algorithms and moving on. And you're successful with doing that. We try and get more of our kids through this gatekeeper. And so consequently, those are the issues, or how we're trying to attack them.
Thank you. Any more comments, questions? Call for the vote, please.
Trusty Charles. Trusty Joyce.
Yes.
Trusty Louis.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trusty Williams.
Yes.
Trusty Robinson.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, I have a motion to open and approve report fifty-four one oh eight, Council Board PSAT eight slash nine and PSAT NMSQT Assessment for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year. That just says.
You said it right.
Let's tell me what, explain it, please.
So these.
Support.
Okay, support, thank you.
No, no, no. I'm moving to be open report fifty-four, I mean fifty-four one oh eight. I'm not going to try to.
Support.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Okay. So the, as you know, the state now, the College Outreach Assembly is the SAT produced by College Board. And the state has also, in the spring of this year, and it looks like they will continue on, to administer a spring test, the PSAT eight-nine for ninth graders and the PSAT ten for our tenth graders in the spring. So as part of preparing our students for those exams and helping to link them to the Khan Academy personal learning resources, we would like to give them the extra opportunity to take this assessment in the fall for ninth grade through eleventh graders, so that they get a fall experience of this test. Once they, what it's like to sit for a three-hour or three-and-a-half-hour exam, but also then that they get that feedback back from that, and they then through Khan Academy have a personal learning course crafted for them that our teachers are using in various different ways in seminar classes and so on to help support student learning and skill acquisition outside of the actual school day.
And if I may really quickly, the NMSQT is actually the National Merit Qualifying Test. So our tenth graders who are taking that will actually qualify for, could qualify for a scholarship from the College Board. That's why that's different between from the PSAT ten in the spring because it actually goes towards qualifying for a scholarship.
Correct. Yes. That's why they have those two different names.
Okay, thank you.
You want to comment?
First year we're doing this?
This is the first year we're doing this like this. This whole sequence, I can remember that this was the first year that our eleventh graders took the SAT. And so getting that alignment and trajectory is important and the development. And I'm very impressed with how the alignment with the PSAT and Khan Academy is beginning to show some significance for our children and to helping them with that. So I'm pleased with that.
And if I could just add.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. That we did pilot this year doing the PSAT NMSQT for all of our eleventh graders across the district. And then at University High, we also had the tenth graders take the PSAT NMSQT. And their ninth graders and eighth graders also tried their PSAT eight-nine. And it was from that data that we really looked at the results of that and what we could see happening with Khan Academy and then our spring scores. And that's why we came, wanted to come to you with this, is because we really saw a connection between that fall experience and the.
One more link if I may really quickly, and I think Mark would have just alluded to this. When they take the PSAT eight-nine, it actually is linked to Khan Academy and what they need to test.
Yes.
And what they need to approve on. Kids literally get a prescription.
That's right.
For what they actually need to work on from that test in the fall moving into the spring. And it really is valuable for our youngsters with that online connection that they have.
I completely agree. It's personally prescribed for them based upon the data from the test. And it's highly promoted. And I'm going, I'm telling you, I'm going back to say that we are on board with College Board. And we are on board because we need to make sure we keep these linkages in place to help our children, so.
Are there any other districts within Oakland County or outside of doing this?
Absolutely, there are. And I would say that there are districts around this country that have their whole secondary component all hooked up, and they make it a requirement. And so we're just moving in that direction to help our kids.
We, we are one of the, I would say, forerunners from, in Oakland County of students that, or of cohorts of students that where we are really advocating for our students to link with Khan Academy, which is a free resource, free resource. It is, and it's an excellent free resource. And as I've shared that with some of our other assessment colleagues around, they have been really interested in hearing what we have to say about the growth that we're seeing with our students. And also, as the SAT and college tests go from tests that were taken by kind of an elite group of students or in some other state, now the East Coast use SAT, but now this is a test that's used for all students. And so we really need to think about how we want to prepare all of our students to be successful on the sixth and eleventh grade. This is an excellent way to be able to give Khan Academy support.
Great.
Great.
Yeah, I just have a comment. I think it's important for the community, this is that, I think a lot of times we hear the board assessment, we hear it as a known and a bad word, but this is where assessment works. This is where data and evidence-based instruction is being driven to benefit our students. Assessments aren't always bad. And the fact that these tools are aligning what that instruction can look like in practice for our students, that's excellent. This is an excellent resource, this is excellent use of our resources, so.
Great. Any more comments, questions? Call for the vote, please.
Myself, yes. Trusty Williams.
Yes.
Trusty Charles.
Yes.
Trusty Joyce.
Yes.
Trusty Louis.
Yes.
Trusty Robinson.
Yes. I have a motion to open and approve report fifty-four one oh nine, N W A measures of academic progress map assessment for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year.
I'm going to open report fifty-four one oh nine, N W A map assessment for twenty sixteen, seventeen year.
Any discussion?
Okay, aligned with what we just spoke about, with our assessment being valuable and content-worthy.
How do you want to add anything?
I'm just hearing, we, this is something we'll be going into our fifth year in the district with this. It has really provided us with a very strong foundation of understanding our students and student growth. And we just continue to expand the work and understanding we're doing with this. And I just, I, I really believe in the tool as a measure of growth for students. And I believe we're on the cusp of seeing some really big changes with that, so.
Great.
Doctor, if you speak on again, for someone always, are we taking this to the state, the state's looking at it?
Oh, the state is, the state's superintendent.
Yes.
Has actually suggested that the math assessment be one of the tools that we use for our students. Because there's all the fluff still at the state level about M seven and what assessment for K eight in particular in the eleventh grade. So, um, nothing has been finalized on that, but it is a tool, and we have been a leader with that. And I would say that we're a leader, not only in the use of the tool, but the analysis of the data regarding the tool. And the work that Polly and Mr. Lopez and the team is doing as it relates to drilling and having conversations around data and assessment. So it has been a very integral part of.
I appreciate you putting in that leader piece, because I thought that's what you were getting ready to say too. But just ever reminding our community that we were a leader, like probably the first to fully embrace this district-wide. And, you know, we're always a guinea pig for many districts in Oakland County, as well as the whole state, and how it's, it's really changed, I mean, I can think of how much value a student could have just seeing that progression over time through themselves.
And just to piggyback off of that, this is where I always have to go in my parent advocacy. Because my daughter gets in the car and says, "Mom, I was supposed to get this number on my reading, but I got this number on my reading, I'm so happy. I, I beat the number I was supposed to get." So our kids, our teachers that are really understanding this information and how it works are then teaching it down to our students. And that's important. And so that's important for then our parents to grasp, how can they understand it? And so I do encourage parents that when you go in for the parents at your conference visiting, you're giving those reports, that you spend a little bit of time just asking your teachers, "What do these numbers mean? What does this projection mean?" Because it really is very comprehensive, and I think it's, again, an excellent tool and it's an excellent use of our resource. So I applaud you all for your efforts in how you are developing our teachers to use these types of, this data, these tools, because they really are working. And our kids get it. Our kids get it.
Thank you.
So if I may just quickly add, I think this is probably the first tool that actually does measure whether or not we're closing these. I think what has happened is the path has been waiting for state assessments in the spring or when they, and come out in the fall. This is a real-time assessment of what's happening with our students as compared to the national norm. And so we are, we are given information to our teachers very quickly about what can be done to close achievement gaps. And you can see when kids exceed that growth target, that we are literally closing, closing achievement gaps, not just for a group of students with this number that is at the state, but literally for individual children. You can see where they're moving from a certain percentile to the national norm and therefore exceeding the national norm and therefore being college and career ready. And so that actually, because Polly has made us smarter about this and going to these conferences and really sort of working with us and really growing us as a district, that embedded professional development is also part of our strategic plan. It really has made us as a district smarter about what does it mean to close achievement gaps for individual students and growing students to be college and career ready.
Okay, thank you. Call for the vote, please.
Trusty Charles.
Yes.
Trusty Joyce.
Yes.
Trusty Louis.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trusty Lloyd.
Yes.
Trusty Robinson.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I have a motion to open and approve report fifty-four one oh ten, College Board, Spring Board, Secondary Mathematics Board Management.
This is an annual renewal of our school's for our secondary mathematics program, as you're aware. We have had a relationship with College Board and Spring Board of real schools for several years, where in the second full year implementation of Spring Board for Algebra I, Algebra II, Precalculus at the geometry at the high school level. And we have had data that has shown that we've seen gains and growth from real school level. Now, in the second year of our implementation at the high school, we're beginning to see teachers really catching on to that whole, that whole practice of, you know, having students not just being able to understand the formula, but actually being able to apply it in a real-world practical way manner. So we're recommending that it be approved with this amount, this will support projecting the moment for next school year for students in middle school and high school mathematics courses.
Comment, question? Call for the vote, please.
Trusty Williams.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trusty Louis.
Yes.
Joyce.
Yes.
Charles, yes. Robinson.
Yes. Okay. And the action items, now we're at the information items, okay? This island will have a front row of action. Our report forty-one, for the support. Bill's summary. Number eight oh four.
Trusty Robinson, from the national community, that you pay our bills on time.
Yes, we pay our bills on time. And it's not going down, it just went up. So make sure you put that as a mention note.
And I'll also, if I may, through the chair, my six-month best treasured, just, just remind us that, you know, that fun time in the summer where you get to write that fat check for your, for your summer assessment. When we talk about assessments, it's not easy. And I just wanted to know, as a fellow resident, I get it, it's painful, but it's not all going to South Valley High School. He did a great job of expounding. He did a great job of expounding on that earlier. So, if your neighbors or people on your social media accounts and whatnot are like, "Oh, down with higher taxes because they're all going to the school and the schools suck" and all that stuff, I said, um, redirect them and let them know, we don't get every single dollar that you, you are assessed, a lot of it goes to the county, which then follows its way back to help us, but by no means are we taxing and collecting every last one of those guys.
Okay. All right, public participation. Um, only those persons with concerns related to school matters may participate during the public participation portion of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board will listen to comments, but may not respond during the meeting. Comments may be referred to at administrative or the superintendent's follow-up. As a matter of fairness, speakers with complaints against individuals are asked not to mention persons by name. Complaint concerning employees should be brought to the technical school principal or other administrators before committee of board. Your cooperation is appreciated. Okay, we have Ms. Cynthia Maxwell. Could you give us your name and address, please?
Cynthia Maxwell, uh, I live in Reford Township, I'm a Southfield Lake Forest Department Chair, Medical Admin Coordinator, and I just, um, wanted to bring up two things, be really quick. Anyway, um, first thing, uh, as a trustee, uh, for honorable Rans Williams mentioned that he was a veteran, I am a veteran myself. I was in Germany when the wall went down, and I remember when the wall went down, we closed our base. And at that time, we had to make sure we organized everything and make sure nothing was left and some stuff was used to be used again. That's my concern right now with Southfield Lake Forest. We have 59 years' worth of stuff, and some stuff, I'm concerned that it would be purged. Um, I know that we have four science teachers that's left. We did lose one day, um, another one left earlier in the school year. I'm concerned that that stuff, if, so we, we still have to pack that stuff, and we, as teachers, we're still teaching kids and we have to pack. And there's glassware, and there's microscopes, there are $1,000 a piece microscope, they were $400 in the past, there are $1,000 a piece. There is at least, uh, three class sets of microscopes, some are oil immersion microscopes, if you know, if you're a science person, you know what that means. And that stuff needs to make it to the new school. There's other stuff that probably we can't use as high school teachers, but I'm sure that the elementary schools could use them. So, I was concerned there's a possible way that that stuff could be stored differently, and so, other, the elementary schools, the middle schools, S-RAC, and Southfield High School, Southfield High School teachers can come in and shop, because there's some stuff, I don't know, as a science teacher, as a chemistry teacher, what you might need, all right? I don't know, we have physics stuff, um, we're packing that, there's tracks, there's tons of stuff, and I, you know, I, I'm not trying to report on anybody, it's just everybody's not, everybody has different jobs. If you're an English teacher, you don't know what a science teacher means, all right? So, if you're a, a science teacher, I don't know what a math teacher means. There's tons of glassware, and that stuff needs to be saved. We don't want to be like Detroit Coast Schools where Reford was left full of stuff and then that stuff was just lost. That's very, very important. I think we need to, you talked about money, we need to save that. And the last thing I'd like to say, I'm still here for Coach Marshall, she's still my good friend, and I still think you need to read, there's discussion need to be done about that. The one thing I can say that, and lastly, um, that, uh, one of the schools, in the one school I know of, uh, a, a, one of the ranked schools, coaches heard of the situation that she might not be coaching, that they would step down as the head coach of their high school, that they would learn from her if she would take over their high school, uh, basketball team. That would be a shame if we lost a state coach that has 23 years of experience, a state championship here in Southfield, we have signs in on 12 Mile and Evergreen that says Class A State Champions, and we lose that person to another school, and we play against her and get whooped. That's, that's my, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have Lucy, is this womanastic?
Oh, very good. It doesn't happen very often.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm Lucy Bommastick, I live in Livonia, I am a teacher at Southfield Lake Forest, and I'm here to talk about Coach Marshall as well. Um, I really don't want to talk about her achievements as a coach and all the championships she's won. What I want to talk about is what great lead she is, and what a mentor she is for our students, her student athletes. She puts student ahead of athlete, values the education of these student athletes. Um, she just, is just a fantastic role model. Uh, holds her program to high standards, expects that out of her athletes, her student athletes as well. I have been in the district, I'm completing my ninth year, and I have just the utmost respect for her. She is just a quality individual, and I don't have a daughter, I was blessed with four boys, um, but if I did, I would find it, it would be absolutely phenomenal if my daughter could be in her program, and I would like you to consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Ms. Marshallso? Name and address, please.
My name is Marshallso, I live at 2875 Clydefellow Road in Southfield, Michigan. I've lived in Southfield, Michigan almost 50 years. All four of my children graduated from Southfield Lake Forest High School. I'll be quick because of the time parameters you've laid out. I understand the, uh, I'm a former councilman in the city of Southfield, and I understand Associate Superintendent Dankovich's financial numbers, I happen to be chairman of the board of Oakland University, and we just passed a $263 million budget, so I understand all of this. I come here actually to represent my daughter, who's taught in the Southfield school system for 28 years, and she was given a layoff notice. Now, I've heard everybody talk today about the quality of education. Now, when you establish a system where interviews are 80% of evaluation, and, uh, and the idea of the, um, evaluations is only 20% of the evaluation, that distorted the system significantly. I would hope on her behalf, if her name is Ellen Berlin, that you would reconsider and put her back in this classroom, she's dedicated her life to this city. She grew up here, she lived here, and she has worked here. I would hate to use my skills as a lawyer to raise all of the issues I believe that abound by the, with regard to the system that has been implemented, I really would, I'd be saddened by that. But with my experience in education and my experience as a lawyer, I think the system that was employed is somewhat flawed, and you've given away the quality. Doctor, you talked about the quality of the student. Well, you can't cut your way to quality. You can't lay off the best teachers who've been here for 20, 25, and 28 years and leave the students in the hands of teachers within year two and three and four years. That's not going to generate the quality you're talking about in terms of the education system. I have much more to say, but I'm not going to burden you. I'm just saying, I hope you will reconsider. My daughter has dedicated her own life to this city and to the school system, and I think the methodology you've chosen to make the determination on layoffs is very flawed, and I would hate to have to determine its flaws in another venue. Thank you.
Okay, we have Ellen Berlin. Okay, thank you. We have Quincy J. Bryce.
Before, again, I would like to say, uh, I'm known as the loss of your colleague and being a former HBCU graduate, uh, Trustee Williams, I appreciate the part that you've done. Doctor Wood, I humbly ask you to...
Your name and address.
Quincy Bryce, 28400 Lockdale. Uh, I humbly ask you to reevaluate, um, your standards of communication that you expect from your employees.
I sent you an email last night.
Yes, ma'am, you did. Uh, there have been situations that have occurred where I've reached out, uh, to people. Uh, one person, I'm waiting about a month for a phone call, someone else I'm waiting since about November, and another person, I've been talking to admin assistant, and I've timed it for 49 minutes, and yet I've been able to speak to that person, I think that's unacceptable. Just like I don't think it's reasonable for me to expect a phone call in five minutes, I refuse to believe I can't get a phone call, a five-minute phone call in two weeks. I don't think, if Mr. Williams say that's the Southfield way. I'm not the type of parent that will come up and run with somebody and be a disgruntled parent if something is wrong. Case in point, my daughter had a broken arm in your district, back when Dr. Robin, uh, Dr. the lady that preceded you, forget her name, because forget her name, had broken her arm. It was totally, there was no issue made up, because you know, if some phone call was made, we got to the bottom of it. There was a situation where someone unauthorized walked into my child's building, had contact with her. I didn't go to the media with that. I was, I, at the time, I was a single parent as a mother passed away. Most mothers in here would have been living, but you know what, I had a phone call with somebody, and we figured it out. So, I'm not the type of parent that any little thing happens, I, you know, run the screen, because if I go to, if somebody goes to the media and all of that stuff, we all lose in the long run. That's how I look at it. But I do expect a phone call, that's all that I ask. And, uh, if there's any way that you can talk to, you know, talk to your staff about that, uh, I would greatly appreciate it, because like I say, I refuse to believe that that's the best way to do it. And if there's anything I can do on my behalf, and I just leave it with this here, when a parent, someone does something the wrong way, somebody, it might be Martin Quarterback, and say, "Well, you should have done this, this, and this, and this." I'm doing this, this, and this, and still not the type. So, I have a, a preschool that's getting ready to go to kindergarten, so should I 367 become 366? Because that's what the lady said in terms of kindergarten, I want my kindergarten to be, you know, and I want my daughter to stay, but we just got it approved, that's all I ask. And if there's a way that there's, that it's cost-rehibited for someone to contact you, let me know, I'll be willing to, hey, pardon me for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea Collins?
Andrea Collins, 29600 Franklin Road, Southfield, Michigan. I'm on, here on behalf of Coach Michelle Marshall. Um, I graduated from Southfield Lake Forest in 2011, and I went on to play basketball for four years, and I've been playing basketball since I was seven, so I have many, I've had many and many coaches, and still to this day, I have four college, four different college coaches, and still to this day, Coach Jackson, Coach Marshall is the best coach I have ever had in my entire life. She, not only on teaching us basketball and teaching us, like, things to know in court, but I was, basketball is not only about, like, sport, you learn life lessons, and she has taught us life lessons. I know to this day I can call her if I need anything and she will help me. She is a great person, she is a great coach. Um, I had some college friends on my basketball team, they were saying that when they got to college, they weren't prepared for the running and all that type of stuff. Coach Jackson prepared us for that. Coach Jackson was like a mom to me and all of my teammates. Like I said, we can call her to this day, and I really just believe that you guys need to reconsider her not having a coaching job at this new school. I think she would do a fantastic job, just like she has been doing in the past, and I just really hope you guys take into consideration and she gets the job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just in the public participation, just on child support matters.
I have, um, fill out, sorry.
What's your name?
Kathy Slate.
Kathy Slate? I don't have it. I don't have it.
Oh, there it is, right there. Yeah, I'll put it over there, because I asked, um, in this case, where it's put.
Give us your name and address.
Thank you.
Sure.
Kathy Slate, 17539 Westland Avenue, Southfield, Michigan. I'm a teacher at Brace, and I wrote down my thoughts because I wanted to be kind of clear and concise, um, so, very complete change of person. My grandmother used to always say, "I can't hear what you're saying for saying what you're doing." This seems to ring true with the recent events and actions done by the district. When I started at Brace from DPS, I was told it was a proverbial stepchild and was treated differently than all other schools. I chose not to believe that until now. Here's some reasons why. Potential buyers and renters of Brace being brought into the school while we're still there teaching. Being the first school to close. To have staff to be subjected to a demeaning interview process to prove our worth and ability. While our entire teaching careers being judged and our employment fate sealed in a 30-minute conversation using a score from an interview count that will count it for 80%, and only our faulty evaluation counted for 20%. Receiving layoff notices to the whole building. And then having to agonize over days to find out if we had a job when interviews were completed on May 21st. Being told at our last staff meeting that we had to be packed up and out of the building by the 23rd, but still having to educate students. Representatives of HR telling my colleagues to stop calling and stop emailing their concerns. One of my colleagues being told, "Why are you worried about other people?" When she asked, "Could she be moved to another position that could possibly open up a room for someone who did not receive a place in the area?" And being told, "I don't know what to tell you, watch the postings." Having of at least two incidents in which administrators wondered why particular teachers did not accept offers for their school, when in fact the teachers never received that offer. Not to mention the colleagues being offered positions for buildings for which they never applied. It is my humble opinion that Brace staff and other schools that are merging are being treated as an afterthought during this whole school closing process. After all, one school stayed open, one didn't. It seems like to me that what I was told at the beginning of my career at Brace is unfortunately true. While I am excited and glad that I received a job offer, I cannot relish in this excitement with my colleagues who I consider my friends and my family stuff. So, I leave you with this quote from one of my favorite movies, Boys in the Hood. Either you don't know, you don't show, or you don't care about the staff at Brace Level. Thank you.
Okay, this time, a board manager, Ms. Joyce. Yeah, okay. Mr. Lewis?
I'll keep it short. Um, this past Sunday, we, again, graduated over 688 students, that's the highlight of our, what, what, what we do. I was pleased and I congratulate all of those students and their parents and guardians and those that it took to get them to where they are. Uh, there were three graduations, started at 10 o'clock in the morning, we had to do it at nine, 10, and it was 10 o'clock graduation, 1 o'clock graduation, 4 o'clock graduation. I then went home, got a little something to eat, jumped on a plane, went to Washington, DC, where we spent, uh, a few days advocating for our students here in Southfield through the Advocacy Institute. There were four basic things that we talked about when we met with our Congresswoman, Brenda Lawrence, Senator Peters, Senator Debbie Stabenow. Implementing the Every Student Succeed Act, ESSA, and restoring local school board governance, restoring local school board governance. We don't need a federal school board. So, we believe as a group from the National School Board Association that the local school board and the community, which you are all a part of, we're closer to it, we know it's best for the district and our students. So, we went up on the hill and set in our offices and met with them and spoke about that. Also, Child Nutrition Act. Also, Child Nutrition Act, helping ensure a healthy learning environment for our students. And you know, we made some changes in our schools to make sure that we're doing that from a nutritional standpoint. Kids need a nutritional meal, other than some of the things our students like to snack on. The other area was the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act. And making sure that we expand opportunities for college and career readiness. We're on that track here in Southfield. The last item we spoke of was the federal education investment, talking about making, well, we talked about making sure that the two thousand and seventeen fiscal appropriations were in order and are in accordance to what the National School Board Association has outlined, and nothing changes there. We then jumped on a plane after that, came here to this meeting. Again, I appreciate your concerns. Some things, as you well know, we as a board may not have, or are directly in the trenches, so we don't get the information. The only way we know about it is once you come and voice your opinions. And we appreciate your concerns, your opinions. Because again, I'll say it, since I've been here in Southfield since nineteen eighty-seven, we have a way of doing things. And the only way to take your business, it's like in your own family. We sit down, we talk about it, we come to a meeting of the minds, and we move forward. So I thank you again for giving me the opportunity to serve. It's been a pleasure, and I look forward to remaining months that I have on this board.
Ms. Charles? Thank you. So this is the last video of this school year as far as the publicized one. And I think it's imperative, just because of a few things that I've heard tonight, that I just drop it in your spirit. I too have been in this community for thirty-plus years, definitely not going to give you the exact number. But my grandparents were one of the first five African-American families to move into Southfield circa seventy. So I think, I don't play around with that, and I own that. And it makes me feel very proud to say that I'm like a, technically, a third-generation Southfield resident. So I just want to leave that in your spirit, as well as a graduate and a substitute teacher for several years in the district. So I don't sit up here oblivious to many of the challenges that occur right there where the rubber meets the road. And I, and I, it just pains me, for example, this past Sunday, how I had to miss graduation for the first time in my time on the board. I thought about Fern Katz, how committed she was to getting to every graduation, and she had to miss a Sunday once. So I said, "Well, if Fern can miss a Sunday for good reason, I'll have to do the same." But I just want to say that it is very somber for me, A, to have not been there, but B, just knowing that it's the culmination of two great institutions that are going to forever live in my heart regardless of anything else that comes. I'll still give a little haterade to Lakeville alumni. None of the current Lakeville students, you get a free pass. But definitely that camaraderie and that rivalry will still live on in the hearts and minds of the alumni. And then lastly, it's just that I am disappointed to hear that, Ms. Slate. And everything that I've ever heard from any member of this board is, "We wanted, and we will still have, a great transition for Imagine 2020." I'll apologize because there's a right way, like you said, and there's a wrong way. And I hope and pray that it was just a little disconnect of communication perhaps. But we are committed and we want it to be smooth. We want the moving to be smooth. Folks should not be interfering with instruction time. We've made that clear. So I appreciate you coming up. It's probably not the easiest place to be, especially knowing that you still have to come to work and, you know, your bosses are right over there. So just know that it didn't fall on deaf ears.
Cynthia?
Yes. I echo some of what my colleague has said. And I've shared before that I, I'm in a district, it just all happens, the district that I work in is one of those districts that is in the media. So I get it, I understand wholeheartedly. And I applaud your bravery for coming here tonight. I do agree that these are rough times. This has been a very rough, rough year. We've had to make some very tough decisions. Everyone, from the board to the cabinet, has had to make some very tough decisions. And I do believe that integrity was upheld. I do, being far removed from it, I do believe that the best interest and the best strategies that could be used were, and perhaps I'm being naive, I don't know, but this is just my own belief that this was done. I just know that it's a tough, tough time. And for those who are sticking with us, I thank you. Because at the end of the day, it's for our kids, whether you're in this county or a neighboring county. We are here, should be here, for our kids. And so with that, as we move into the summer months, I hope that you all will do as I'm planning to do this summer and that's rest and relax. And really think about what can we do to energize for the upcoming school year. We have a lot of changes coming up, as everyone knows. And so we just have to be ready to prepare our spirits and our minds and our hearts for what that's going to look like. And be willing to put our very best foot forward because that's what our kids deserve. That's what my daughter deserves, that's what all the kids in this district deserves, that's what all the kids in this state deserve. We are the people, as my colleague mentioned, we're the people, we're here, we're on the ground. We feel it. We feel it with our friends, our parents, our, our, our family members, our colleagues, our coworkers. We feel it ourselves. Not those who are far removed and making the regulations and telling us, you know, how to do it, but and they can go home, they don't have to deal with it the day-to-day. We have to deal with it the day-to-day. So I just really encourage that we move forward on one accord together and really just try to remember that we're in this for the kids at the end of the day, just like co-parenting. You may not like the other parent, you may not like everything the other parent does, but at the end of the day, you know that parent has the best interest of your joint baby together. And that should be enough to help you deal with that parent for just another day. So hopefully we can do that together, we can work collaboratively so that we can do what's in the best interest of our baby for just Southfield schools.
Okay, I just want to say that we understand our teachers and our principal skill, and we sympathize with you. But the bottom line is, we have to be proactive and not reactive. We have, in local production, we have to react to that. And we have to make sure we have schools that their students, their field chairs, and not empty chairs. So we make decisions that are not happy, doesn't make everybody happy. But the bottom line is, we want to keep the doors open, and we have to make cuts. And if you've been listening to the news, you know that we're not the only ones doing that. And Mark Clements, Last Cruise, Utica Schools, we're all facing state problems. We have to make cutbacks. And the reason we're not making cutbacks is because we're getting less funds from our state. The government now is giving dollars to private schools, charter schools, community schools, your tax dollars. Who haven't heard of giving our tax dollars to private schools? That never happened before, but it is now. So we're getting less money, we need to know that, to operate a school district, you know? And we have to make cuts that are going to make all people unhappy. But keep the doors open, it has to be done, unless you want to wind up, like, of the school district. And we don't want to do that. So, you know, we sympathize with you. But we're doing our best for this district, know that. Okay. Future board meetings, Tuesday, June twenty-first at six P.M., student hearing. Mr. Poole, my staff, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Joyce. Thursday, June twenty-third at six P.M., special board meeting, study session, review of the budget. Tuesday, June twenty-eighth at six P.M., truth and taxation public hearing. Tuesday, June twenty-eighth, six thirty P.M., special board meeting, study session, public K program review and the bugs adoption. Thursday, June thirtieth at six P.M., board organization meeting. Thursday, June thirtieth at six thirty, special board meeting, study session, our superintendent's mid-year review. Friday and Saturday, August twenty-six, twenty-seven, special board meeting, board retreat. This meeting is adjourned.